You're live with the graphic and you may begin whenever you're ready.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Hello, Reston Association members, Reston community. It is 8:30, so we are going to start this meeting, special meeting in the Board of Directors, Monday, February 8th. And the topics tonight are an executive session consultation with counsel and then back into an open session to discuss IT working group for this particular special meeting. I see as far as establishing quorum, I see our Board of Directors. First, I see Bob Patrign, Treasurer Member at Large. I see Erin Webb, Lake In, Tox. Let's see, who's next? Karen Anton, Hunter's with Dogwood. Tom O'Karen, Member at Large. Sarah De Souza, Member at Large. Mike Collins, Apartment Representative. Van Eyre, Member at Large. Who am I missing? John Mooney will be absent for at least part of the meeting tonight. He is at our Hunter's Milk Reston Comprehensive Plan Meeting tonight. I think I've got all but one attending and myself representing South Lakes and also President. I have no true opening remarks other than just a reminder that anything put in the chat room is not necessarily going to be responded to. I'm anticipating two portions of member comments. One right before we go into executive session and then when we come back out of executive session, I believe it's appropriate to hold member comment period again at that point for those who have had the opportunity to see some of the additional materials put into the public website for tonight. That said, I would like to adopt the meeting agenda for tonight. If I might have a motion for to that effect. So everybody seems to be on mute. But I saw hands from Sarah and Karen. So I believe one of them was a motion to move to executive session. I'm gonna make that Sarah and a second from Karen Anton.
I'll take it.
All in favor of that motion. Might I see some hands raised and an audible audible from them.
Point of order, I think you said a motion to go into executive section. Do you adopt the minutes and so forth?
I thought I said adopt this.
That's what I was seconding.
Correct. Adopt the agenda, please.
Adopt the agenda. Sorry.
All right, I'll vote aye on that.
Okay. All right. So ayes from everyone on adopting the agenda. Okay, we've got that and then it said aye. Any number of comments at this point? So Sean, if we've got anyone who would like to comment?
I believe Harris Kimmel.
All right, Mr. Kimmel?
Actually, it's Michelle Kimmel. I don't know how far we are into this pandemic and I still have yet to figure out how to take my son's name off Zoom. But here I am. So I've come to the board before to speak after problems occur and to ask for help fixing them. But tonight I wanted to use the opportunity to hopefully prevent what might be a potentially costly problem from occurring. I attended the member focus group on the website and the primary member needs for the project were very clear. Create a website that gives the members the ability to pay assessments, purchase pool passes and classes with ease, a functioning search, quick access to association documents and a simple intuitive and responsive design for ease of access on all devices. We were also clear that our expectation was that this project is a website project first and foremost. But that was just one member focus study group or focus group. So ultimately, what staff needs from the board is to hear exactly what your expectations are, what your vision for the scope of this project is and clear guidance to ensure that the project is in line with that scope and expectation. But at the last board meeting, when staff presented, the board did not direct staff. And I see that today you're considering the creation of an IT committee. And I would strongly suggest that the website project is something that should be considered by this committee because it does need technical oversight. Also, I would like to strongly urge that we tabled the website project until this committee could review the project. We have to remember that any money spent on this website is money that's not being spent on our pools, paths and lakes. And it is, the board must conduct proper and transparent due diligence on this project to make sure our money is being spent wisely. We can't afford to get this one wrong. It's not just losing money possibly, but it's also losing the community's trust. And so I'm hopeful that this new committee can consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I knew I recognized the Kimmel part, but I couldn't place the Harris part. So thank you for your comments. Do I have any?
Sorry, Michelle, do you mind actually giving your address for minutes purposes?
Yeah, we gotta get her off mute.
Sorry, you had to unmute me. Yeah, so my address is 1937 Upper Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Christina and Sean. Any other member comments at this point?
We do not have any hands raised or any comments in the chat.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to move into executive session consultation with counsel. Do I have such a motion moved? Second by Erin. Any discussion?
Aye from men. In a second.
Well, we got the second, so ayes for moving into executive session. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yes, we've got it. Okay. Christina, would you move us into executive session and all of our audience? So we'll be back when we're back.
Hello Christina, we're, we're back.
Hello Christina, we're, we're back.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have everyone back now. All right. Tony, if you would please help me out on the cleansing motion, I don't have it directly in front of me.
I believe I heard Director Vice President Anton state that she moves that the members of board of directors certify to the best of each and every one of their knowledge. And only those matters appropriate for discussion in executive session involving consultation and counsel for her to discuss in executive session.
Karen, is that what you?
That is exactly what I, what I moved.
All right, do we have a second to that cleansing motion? Bob Patrine, thank you, and all in favor that, that is what was said and done. I see. John, I see Erin, yes, no.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, me, Bob, Karen, John, oh, John, John's abstaining because he wasn't there for the whole thing, Tom, Sarah.
You know about from Ben.
And Ben, Ben, are you good with that cleansing motion?
I, I, yes.
And then abstains were Erin and John Mooney, and I believe Mike Collins had to drop. So. All right, passes. Order, side order of, of business, there's been a request for a five-minute bio break since we've been in the executive session for so long. So I am so sorry for our guests who are here, but if you will give us just a few minutes for a bio break, we will be right back. I'm going to put my screen on stop video while I step out of the room. Okay, let's see, I'm back, I see Karen, Bob. There we go. Tom, Sarah.
Brandon's here.
Then. There's Erin and John Mooney, I'm looking for John Mooney. All right, well, he will be back shortly, I promised that we would begin the open session with member comments. The open session. The open session is to discuss an IT working group resolution for suggested it is in the public Dropbox as well as our directors Dropbox for this meeting, so that's the topic at hand for the rest of the evening. So, any member comments?
I believe Jennifer has her, is that your hand up Jennifer?
Hi, I just want, this is Jennifer, just took 2010 Upper Lake Drive in Reston. I believe that Tony passed my comments on to the board earlier and just wanted to make a note that I did pass on on comments to the board. And if you guys have any questions, I'm off the comp plan meeting and here if you have questions for me, that's all, thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Erwin, I see Erwin.
Erwin Flashman, 1327 Butter Milk Lane. I also made comments in writing to Tony, and I assume that he has shared those comments with the members of the board. And I hope that you carefully consider them. Thank you. If you have any questions, of course, I am available.
Many of those comments I I know were passed on whether or not the board directors actually had an opportunity to review those. I cannot comment on that at this point. Any other member comments?
I believe there's an individual Becker that is interested in making comment.
I'm Kathy Baum, actually, I use Becker as my whatever. I'm the past president of the Reston Association, and I would like to suggest that this motion needs to go either before the Board of BAC or Board of Governance. It is inappropriate to bring it up at this time, you're in the middle of a change of Board of Directors. It needs to go to committee, thank you.
Thank you Kathleen.
Kathy.
Kathy, I'm looking at some other name and I'm going, what, sorry.
As of, at that point, we do not have anyone else that has raised concern to comment.
All right. So, who, I guess, this was a special meeting by Ben, Sarah, Bob, so who wants to lead off on this discussion?
Ben and Sarah. Sorry Bob, you get dragged in with me on everything. I let Ben take the lead on it if he's here with us, Ben, are you here, if not, I can jump in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, and we'd love to see you face.
I'm winning my bet Julie.
All right, well, I did not rely, I'll rely on what I have to say rather than on my face appearing there on camera. So, the Technology Review Committee is something that I had proposed back in 2016, and then in 2017, and every year since then, we have brought it up, but due to much of bureaucracy and much of reasons that are strangely unknown, we just have not been able to put such an important committee in place. I feel that RA is an organization that lacks in IT capabilities in-house, and certainly does not have the budget to procure outside consulting expertise that it needs. So, just like we have our DRB, EAC, Fiscal Committee, and all the committees made of volunteers. I think it's very important for us to establish a set of volunteers that will provide the direction and even implementation. Technology Committee is one of the most generous and committee with professionals who volunteer, most of the successful platforms and tools out there are open source with billions of lines of code that's written. And the technology folks, community suddenly does not hesitate to volunteer their time. And this is pre consulting help as well as implementation on many of our important projects that such a technology committee can provide. The reason why it's being talked about tonight with such urgency is because I feel that RA is constantly being threatened by outside factors in terms of providing its technology components with resilience and security. So you need a well-architected set of IT controls in order for governance financial capabilities within the organization. And we do handle financial transactions in tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars at a time. And I think that we're seriously disadvantaged if we do not have this technology committee in place. And therefore, I request my fellow board members to put this in place as a committee, but more as a task force in bringing Reston Association's technology landscape up to speed in order to be able to sustain in today's digital age, thank you.
Classification, just for a moment, because I've seen working group, board committee, advisory committee, so the way this resolution is written.
We are asking for a committee, not a working group, because this is something that has to have continuity and as well as context for many future boards to come. A working group can perform a certain task and disintegrate, and it's only taken me four years for the board to allow this to be an agenda item, so I would therefore not want future boards or future leadership to sideline this important requirement, and therefore I think it should be a committee rather than a working group, because also in terms of, I already talked to you about why it is important to secure our technology components, but also in terms of the dollar amount and IT spending is more than, it's probably one of the top line items. And then the many procurement, I just talked about security and resilience, but also in terms of procurement, there's constant advice that's needed for the staff in order to be able to procure the best tools that's out there in the marketplace.
Karen?
Well, it's just, it was sort of expanding on what you were getting at Julie, I think, is I'm curious as to why this is being proposed as a board committee rather than an advisory committee.
Bob?
Well, so we ran this by Tony, and I think Tony has blessed it, and as in it's certainly from every legal aspect, I would say to sound, if I could speak for Tony, I'll let him comment on that. But from every, you may have an opinion as to why it may or may not be fit as a certain entity, but from a legal perspective, I believe Tony thinks it is sound.
I think the four, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, I think the four directors who worked on this, the feeling was that you need to have an IT committee that's as that has the strength of the board like the fiscal does, which is kind of and in between where it does have board members and it does have qualified members from our community, and hence I think Bob, this was a big part of the reason why we pushed for a committee versus advisory or working group. And did I, did I get that, or Bob, do you want to add something to it?
And who were the four?
Me was one, there, then, and Tom McCurran.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so it the I think this is an optics issue as well as anything else, just the naming conventions, advisory committee would suggest that it is not a top priority within the organization, and given the ever-increasing reliance of the organization on IT and all of the components that we, we need to formalize this realizing that this will evolve, I don't think we can truly treat it as a working group, which would suggest that this might be something that we could address certain issues that are prevalent at the moment. We, given the, the background of numerous people who live in our community that have the requisite skills and the up-to-date, in fact, forward-looking views on how technology can be, can be put to use and the issues and problems and concerns that are raised as we move more and more away from old ways of doing business that we need to formalize this committee and make it an essential part of the organizational structure, it can only serve to assist in a very meaningful way, staff and the board of directors meet the responsibilities going forward.
That, John?
So a pivotal reason, though, for suggesting that it be a board committee is so that there would be a actual board member and not just advisor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and you're fine with that Tony?
Yes, I mean, the precedent is there with so absolutely be done.
Okay, thank you.
This is not, this is not an attempt to suggest that there is anything wrong with the current staff, this is this is anticipatory and provides backup and a broader perspective than any one one group, small group as, as we do have to anticipate and deal with issues as they arise.
Hank?
I just wanted to comment that staff supports this recommendation. As a
Thank you Hank. John?
Did you say John?
I did say John.
Okay. So, I'm concerned about some of the, some of the substantive points. The first is and they're really three of the, the three of the responsibilities, six responsibilities, I guess, called out in the draft draft amended resolution. I'll start with the easier one, and that's the last one, F, provide hands, when appropriate, provide hands-off implementation. I could, I could see saying provide hands-on implementation advice. But to, we've always made, we've always said that we don't want our committees to be doing the work, but to be advising us on to do work. So I have that concern about saying that they would provide hands-on implementation. The, the other two are sections A and D under responsibilities. And, and what I'm concerned about is how are we going to have to do security checks, or is it, would it be recommended that we do security checks on the members of the committees? I don't know how intimately they're going to have access to our security data. So, so what is necessary there, what is advisable there?
Do we have security clearances for our employees? That's my, just a question to Hank, do we have security clearances for our employees?
There's no different levels, when people are hired, they go through certain checks, but I would not call it a
Right. So like my husband has a clearance job, I don't think we have that kind of security clearance requirements, and
We do not.
And the kind of data they would, or information they would have access to is very similar to what we have the members on fiscal have access to. Hank, am I right, or?
Yes.
So I don't
The difference here, Sarah, as I, as, and again, I am, you all know, I, I keep repeating it, but you don't need me to repeat it. I demonstrate it, I am not an expert in IT, but depending on the granularity of the security information they will have access to, that's quite different, that's quite different.
Hold on Ben.
That's quite different from no, having some general financial information. So, I mean, do we have non-disclosure agreements, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I mean, we're talking about security here.
My issue I have is that we don't have it for our staff and other volunteers.
So hold on guys, I, so I'm an expert in IT, and I can offer how things are done. I have security clearance for banking and federal government customers, and I can assure you that the majority of the code that's being used in production at all these customers, majority of it is open source. And a lot of the mission critical applications that they use, these are high-visibility congressional oversight type of projects, a lot of open source is being used. Now, just because you have a security clearance does not mean that you deploy things in production. What I mean by that is there are different environments, there are sandbox, dev, test, and production, and if we were to implement, first off, when we are implementing, we're sitting in our desks at home, probably pushing code to a source code repositories that's as well open source. And we can package things in a way that the staff then, Clara in this case, can take that packaged product and deploy that to production after performing the required inspections. So, I, I want to, you know, your, your concerns are not applicable over here, because we are not really working on those financial systems, and we are not looking at any of the financial data. It's only the RA staff that's working on it, or we are doing the work, which is very different than in the physical world, because we are writing code that can then be implemented, that's what it means.
Yeah. Again, I'm not talking about access to financial information or anything like that, but understanding how we have structured our very security system, that's, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. And how we vet members of the committee so that they have, so that we're comfortable with them having that intimate access to how we structure our very security system irrespective of the particular content.
So you don't have any security right now, it's only going to get better by having somebody put controls in place. The other item I want to say is because security patterns are common across all organizations. Securing data at rest and use in motion authentication, authorization, encryption, these are all These are all common controls that are utilized. But there are certain key pieces of information that's known by critical, it's, it's, it's only known by critical personnel. That is not known by everybody. So just because we build the security control, it's, it's not a secret. It's common knowledge within the marketplace as to what a security control is for an organization. It's the same that a bank uses here or another organization, another country. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's the same thing. It's the same encryption algorithm that everybody uses. But it's the encryption key that changes, which is the lock that you can't unlock in the next 72 years. So you know, those are some of the details that when it comes to technology is what describes how how those are put in place.
Okay, I want to open this back up to some member comments typically in our open session meetings, you know, materials are made available to our members in advance of our deliberations and whatever. And I know some of our members have submitted written comments, but I think some of those need to be brought to light in, in a more open fashion because of the topic we're covering. And I've gotten a couple requests for some members that wish to speak as well. So I'd like to give those folks a chance to perhaps share where they were thinking rather than just saying, hey, our stuff's in the, you know, we sent you an email because we certainly haven't had time to read those all and deliberate. So perhaps that would be worthwhile. The other thing is our meeting was to finish up at eight. What time was it? Nine forty. So I need a motion to extend the meeting. Might I suggest we extend it to eleven? All right.
Second.
We're all good with that? Everyone good with that? Okay. All right, so the first person who asked if they might speak again is Kathy Baum. So if she is still on, you had something more to say, and then I see Ken Kenuvin wanted to respond. And then we'll go back through Jennifer Irwin and whoever else was left there.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and introduce, this is my, you know, generic email. I'm Kathy Baum, past president of RA last year before Julie. And while I acknowledge the importance of having this working group, committee, et cetera. I believe it needs to be vetted through the Board Operations Committee, Board Governance Committee to give it some substance parameters. I'm not quite sure what the word I'm looking for is, but it is clear that we spend a lot of money on IT. Member communications is incredibly important. We've had people running for the past few years who keep talking about communications, communications, communications. And I will, I believe things have improved over the past couple of years. But I truly believe that this needs to go through a vetting process. Whether it's the Board Operations Committee, the Board Governance Committee, so that we have an actually written document that we can vet. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ken, I know you had asked, so Ken Kenuvin, anything you wanted to share with the collective group?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Ken Kenuvin, prior resident of Reston 11432 Waterview Cluster and Reston, former board president, and I had the opportunity to sit into many of these meetings. This one caught my attention because I too spent well over 30 years in the IT community and the last 10 years consulting and teaching board governance. And so I think the two are coming to bear here. I think one of the matters that I'm seeing here is that whoever is portraying this committee is, is at least giving the perception that this committee is taking over the responsibilities of whatever the IT management is within the organization. And that would be unfortunate. The purpose of any committee is to advise the board, make a recommendation to the board, nothing more. And this board, I would agree with Kathy Baum, it does need to have some importance. One could tie it to the Board Operations Committee. Some organizations tie it to their risk or audit committee or do both. But again, I think it is important that this committee be comprised of board members as well as people from the field in terms of their expertise. I would recommend a layperson as well. But again, I'm really concerned that this committee is giving a lot of steam in terms of having a lot more power and authority over the IT direction of the organization. And that is not its purpose. And I think those that are well in tune with good governance would agree that that's not the way any committee should be operating. I will also recommend that go back to the archives. You will see that the working committees around IT have been in place. And we've done these many times since I would say, oh, around the 2004 timeframe. And the biggest issue I see is the boards always revert to the mean. They always revert to the status quo and do not do anything to follow through on any of the recommendations that these volunteers put a lot of time and effort into. So I would put great emphasis on if this committee were to be formed, that you really take it seriously. And the board looks at IT not as something that automates your existing processes. I think then I would agree, we're not here to try to automate. We're not trying to digitize. We're trying to see if we can improve the process and make doing business with our constituents a lot easier and far more intuitive. So those are my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions because I do have some history going back to I sat on several of the IT committees in the past or IT working groups and advisory committees that were formed in an ad hoc way. So this isn't the first time this radio has been held. I'm guessing that this time the board should take it seriously.
Thank you, Ken. Jennifer, is there anything from your written comments that you wish to share in a more, you know, public opportunity with us now?
No, I'm, I'm good as I can. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Julie, we do have Michelle that would like to speak?
Yes, I was getting to Michelle. Michelle Nutt Harris. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Nutt Harris. Yes. So, you know, just very quickly, you know, if, if Venice brought this up for years, it seems like this is something we should be able to handle now and not wait. However, if you think that you need to for some reason wait, I think we should also agree that we should put a hold on all major IT decisions. It does seem that this is very much needed. And I don't think we should be making big decisions until this is in place. Thank you.
Okay, I will also go back to Irwin because the same thing, you submitted some things in writing, not everyone that's on Zoom or YouTube would have seen those. So is there something specific you want to bring to light as we look at the resolution before us?
Yes, I would like to express that I think that this is very important, that it be implemented, that it be paid attention to by the board, that it not be allowed to go forward or that it not allow to go forward any decisions, major decisions about expenditure of money or designs of systems without this board, without this committee being in place and having an opportunity to have reviewed what is being proposed as well as the presence circumstances of the present system and what is needed. And I made specific recommendations with regard to potential amendments to the resolution as it was proposed. And they include the following. With regard to responsibilities, I would add one, providing the general authority to review the IT capabilities and needs of RA and provide advice to the IT director and the board regarding the achievement of the best results for RA at a reasonable cost. Regarding competition, I would, the composition of the committee, I would add that one of the qualities that would be required of any member be a high level managerial experience in the field. And finally, with regard to the performance evaluation section, I suggest that it be amended to read as follows. The committee shall evaluate the RA IT performance and its own performance in an annual, on an annual basis and develop criteria for such evaluation. Chairman of the committee shall report the committee's conclusions to the board and may make recommendations for improvement.
Thank you.
I haven't finished yet.
Oh, sorry.
Comment. This is not something that should be delayed or do, nor do I find it necessary to run it through the BOC or the Board Governance Committee as all of the members of those committees are present. And this is a matter that shouldn't have to wait. This is a matter that needs attention. And it has been long, long, far too long without the proper attention that it needs to have both from the board's point of view and from Snap. You need to have expertise and you haven't had it applied.
I see that John Farrell has his hand up.
Good evening. I don't know what could possibly be gained by sending this resolution to either BACH or BGC. I also don't think that there is a threat that this committee, which would have board members on it, would supersede the IT management staff, just like I don't think the fiscal committee supersedes the CFO. But the CFO sees the fiscal committee as a resource for that function. And I anticipate that this committee would function in exactly the same way as the fiscal committee does. And given the fact that I find the use of the website to be a torturous experience, it probably is a good idea to do whatever we can to get the assistance needed. Because I know I'm not the only one who finds the website to be a torturous experience. So whatever assistance the community can provide the staff with the direct involvement of board members is going to facilitate a better experience for the membership, which at the end of the day, I believe is what we're about. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, John. Have not heard from Aaron, I think. Did you say?
It could have been both. You can, ladies first.
No, go ahead. I have nothing to say at this moment.
All right, I I, I feel it's important to have to have this type of input. I am still undecided on whether a board level committee is the right answer for it. I, I am persuadable on that one, although I do believe as written, there are some significant flaws in the proposed resolution. That, as was pointed out, the goal would be to have something that would function like the fiscal committee. And if you read the language in this resolution, you scroll up to the fiscal committee one, almost every set of responsibilities called out for the fiscal committee starts with the word review and provide analysis, review policies and procedures, review and discuss a report, recommend a CPA to prepare an annual report and oversee the annual audit and those sorts of things, lots of language about advise and review. Whereas the language, as, as pointed out earlier, especially in items F, has the IT committee providing hands on experience. And although Director Ira was trying to make us more comfortable by talking about pushing code to a code repository, that made me very uncomfortable that this committee would be able to push code that would be deployed. So I think there's more work to be done to mature this and to get the scope right. I'm hearing from some of the feedback that the, the, the website and management of the, and, and the shape of the website and the interaction and, and making it valuable is of great concern. And ensuring that we get best value for dollar as that work on the website happens. As written, this would do a lot more than that as well. I think there's also security evaluations and reviews that can be done and audit. I, I think we can, a, a couple of maybe a week or two more on, on this could get it to mirror the other board committees so it fits the, the governing documents a little bit better. It's, it's poking out to me like it was a little bit hurried. And I, I think we can take a breath, use our existing process and, and do a better job.
John?
Though I've tried to do it before, I want to express my, where I, that I am where Aaron seems to be. And that is that I consider this very important. I believe we should do it. I'm persuadable to make it a board committee rather than advisory committee. But I'm concerned about, first of all, process. These are, resolutions are supposed to be put through the, the Board Governance Committee. And, and that's because we look at all the resolutions and we know what is found in resolutions and what isn't. And, and I think for example, this, in the responsibilities, it, it does not say that the purpose of this committee is to advise the board of directors about these matters. And I think that that is the umbrella. It is an advisory committee. It advises the board. I'm concerned about the, the again, section A, the discovery efforts to understand the association's technology landscape. I don't know what that means, but it seems to, to give an absolute right to do an audit. And I, I don't believe that committees should have absolute rights. I, they, they, they should serve the board. And, and I'm uncomfortable when it says they provide hands on implementation. Who, who decides when it's appropriate? And, and again, we have shied away historically from having our committees do our work for us. They're supposed to review and advise. So those things make, make me very uncomfortable. And what I would like to see is for the four authors of this to join the the Board Governance Committee in a session and try to work out the, the nuances that should be in there.
Yeah, one of the things that I thought, have thought about as we've been looking at this is and I'm not against having a focus, you know, on this piece as, you know, Ben and I have sparred over this over the years. But I am concerned that, that the membership and even the directors do have a more time to look at, look at this and give it, you know, a couple more sets of eyes and reactions. Can always look at, if, if it made sense to try to speed it up, if you will, a, you know, I can call another special meeting specifically only on this resolution for the, the crafting of that, which would in essence bring both BACH and BG C see members together in one meeting as we have tonight, though. We may not all be ready to vote on this. So that was one thought I had over the last few hours of how might we accomplish and accommodate the sense of urgency of some of our members, the process element of our governance, why we have these committees, you know, put in place? Have we given any thought as to the qualifications, the, the skill the skill set that we would be looking at in any interview process of going up to, I think you were thinking up to seven members. And, you know, will we always have a board member that is perhaps as I, I T savvy as Ben or to some level, you know, lower level myself or even Aaron in this regard? So I throw that out.
This is something Ben has been trying to do for four years, Julie, and I think the membership may not understand, but the board members definitely see the urgency to it. I agree about the wordsmith thing and the language. Maybe an idea could be, this was written by Tony. So Tony, if you can help us tweak it for now, and then we can wordsmith the charter, the committee charter in depth, in detail, however long you want, because we need something up and running ASAP to help us with our current I T issues without going into the details. So I hope the board members appreciate that.
I have something to say, to add to it.
All right, Ben, go ahead, and then Karen, and then I have another comment.
Yes, so I want to add to what Sarah said. For the board members who want to delay this, I want to be very clear. I don't think you have a choice. As an I T professional with nineteen years of experience who works solely on security and infrastructure for financial institutions and federal government agencies, I can tell you that R A's I T systems are unfit for conducting financial and P I data. So if you were a bank or if you were somebody who was handling P I data, you would be shut down. And you thoroughly need the help. The staff has asked for help. And right now, tonight, the reason why we are having a special meeting is because this committee needs to start asking, acting as a task force, as a SWAT team, right away. And being able to make R A capable of conducting business, that's how severe this is. You, if you're not in the I T profession, or if you have not studied the security controls, then you're not going to be able to appreciate that. But you have to be aware of the fact that you are not being responsible by just trying to pick on some of these words. You can always amend a resolution. You're picking on certain words. So let this go through tonight, and let's have a committee in place so that the work can begin. And if you want to make modifications, you can submit your amendments, and they can always be made at a future board meeting. That's what we can do. But we need a vehicle in place to start helping the staff right away, because otherwise you're going to be responsible for the decision you make tonight, and we need this vehicle in place.
Karen. I fully appreciate how important this is, but I also feel like I'm, you know, kind of being bullied to take action tonight, and I honestly, I don't think, you know, another few weeks is going to make a big difference. I feel that, and I don't feel this needs, you know, months and months of work, but I just, I just don't feel ready to vote on this tonight. I also will remind everybody that there's another section of this resolution that B G C is going to be working on for March. And somebody had suggested that the four people who fashioned this resolution join with B G C, who we're talking about close to the entire board in that case. So I don't know, I don't know that it needs to go to B G C, but I'm just, I, it has been a long time, Ben, that you've been asking for this, and I've appreciated that, and I respect the need for it, but I don't think another few weeks is going to make a big difference.
Chair, may I be recognized?
Please.
Try to suggest a compromise here. Director Ira was correct that you could pass it tonight, and then we could very quickly amend it to handle whatever, if we're in, if the board is in agreement that this needs to happen, there are two ways that I can try to solve the board's problems. The first way is as Director Ira said, pass it tonight, and then let's, you know, give me two or three directors that are interested in this, that need revisions, and I'll work with them, and we'll get the revisions, and we can bring it back to another board meeting. Or do the same thing, don't pass it tonight, give me two or three directors, let's work it, and then get it passed by unanimous written consent.
Or another special meeting.
Or another special meeting. This can, this can all be done, you know, this is a happy problem in that we seem to be, the board seems to be in agreement that this needs to happen, the question is wordsmithing, and I will work with anything less than quorum to get us across the finish line with this.
Tony, the, I have a question for you. If we pass this tonight, can we put the call out for volunteers ASAP?
Yes, I mean, yes, from a legal perspective, I don't know from an operations standpoint, I would assume so.
So that was part of the reason for pushing so that, and then you have to have the volunteers interviewed by BAC. We have to have a special BAC meeting for that. Then they have to have to get them a consent calendar, and we were hoping to get them on the consent calendar for the Fed Board Meeting so that we're up and running, we're ready to.
Have anyone put together the qualifications of said volunteers? We do not have that as part of the documents you shared with us to look at. I mean, honestly, I just think that that a few more days, whatever, to be able to consume what's been put before us this afternoon and to look at some of the other elements that typically have been looked at by.
I think the qualifications are in there in the packet. We've asked what the, what the qualifications are. Ben, can you elaborate? It's there in the draft charter as well.
I see, have a competence in that. I don't know that that's all that, that would be when I think about the questions being asked. Anyways, I'm just expressing my opinion. I'm one person.
Yeah, you're nitpicking when there are more serious issues they're facing. And like we said, it can be modified at a later date. I mean, the gravity of the situation.
Calendar for February. So, I mean, you just said you'd like, you wanted, you wanted to fast track this so that it actually was on a consent calendar for February. And we bought, we would, there's a whole lot of unanimous electronic emails that are going to have to take place, which is back why I suggested perhaps an easy thing might be a special meeting where everyone's in place. Okay. Who had their hand up that I missed? John?
I will not be able to support adoption of this as it now stands. And I would say that we have had this for a matter of hours today. And this is not, I do not know I T, but I know something about making laws. I've been involved in that process for much of my career in local government. And you don't rush something important through like this. I would support what our general counsel has suggested, that he worked together with a team of directors below the, below the threshold of the majority to try to quickly refine this. I do not think this will take a lot of time, but I am, I simply, I cannot and I will not support it at this time because I think there are dangerously ambiguous terms in there. And so I would, I would, I would make a motion at this time that, that the president form a committee, including some of the principal drafters of this proposal, which we all agree is necessary, and, and other board members that she would say, short of a quorum, to work with Tony to redraft this, to get it into a form that would be acceptable to as many board members as possible.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, it's a fallback position. I think that is, is not unreasonable. It is, given the number of meetings that we schedule each month and given this, the the importance of this committee, I think either a working group or another special board meeting is the, is the only way that we're going to move this forward. My, I was very adamant going into this evening's meeting to push on this so that we would adopt this and then refine it as need be, because having, having a committee established doesn't mean it's going to be up and running. It's going to take, it's going to take some weeks and maybe a month for it to get, get organized and identify people who have the skills and ability, which, and interest and willingness to serve on a committee. So we got a lot of, a lot of moving parts. The point tonight, as I stated in previously, is we need to demonstrate the importance of this issue to the membership and putting it into, you know, rolling it back into a discussion puts off making that decision. And I think we all, I think everybody here agrees that it's important enough to have it. I think that what we're really, what we're really jousting about right now is it is interesting and some of it's important, but I think common sense and reasonableness will will out. No volunteer is going to spend the amount of time that would be necessary to manage these things and take over I T. We have what, we have a, what I believe is a very capable I T director, she needs help. And this is one way that we can formally give her that help.
John, if I, just to make sure I understood your, your motion. And that was that I would select, let's just say, two people, make it easy, two people to work with Tony. Perhaps one who had not been part of the authoring of this document, and perhaps one who had been to bring it to a forum that we could do a, another very focused special meeting that would still allow for it to be part of our February board meeting to be added to the February board meeting for adoption, or I don't, unanimous consent emails are awfully, awfully hard. So but I could certainly pull a special meeting together, say, within, what's today, Monday? Let's say next Monday, so that those two people were working with Tony to give us a clean document for a special meeting to review as a total board, say, next Monday. Is that along the lines of what you were thinking?
Yeah, I, two, two board members may be a little, I think having two, two folks from the group that authored, authored the request makes sense, and then, then one or two other board members to work with Tony. But, but I would say, give, give the group that worked on this, you know, a variety of points, represent diverse points of view among that group, you know, because everybody sees something from a slightly different angle.
I was just pulling the number.
But, but.
Sense of, and certainly, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to be part of that group, working with, with Tony.
And the purpose, the purpose of my motion is not to delay this.
Right.
But to get the best law we can. We are the lawmakers of Resident Association, and we ought to be careful in the laws that we make.
It would also allow for us to study additional comments that might come in, and some considerations as we've been deliberating this idea over the.
Erwin has made some suggestions, for example.
Yeah, as John mentioned, this all, this all came to us today. So, you know, we, it's, it's just not enough time.
So the draft I wrote is from 2017. It has gone through multiple boards, and John Mooney and Julie Betzer were on the board before I was on the board when I presented this. And since then, it's been stonewalled. So you're a lawmaker, and you're taking all the comments. But more importantly, what you've done over the years is delayed and stonewalled this, which is why it has come to tonight. You know, six months ago, we had our entire financial system running on a laptop or computer somewhere, and its backup was totally not there. There was no disaster recovery plan. We lost all our financial data, and that's the kind of incident you have on your hands by not acting in the last four years, and you want to keep on delaying it, or some words over there. And you really have to live with your decisions.
Any more comments? Tom, you haven't commented.
No, I had lots of discussions with various board members over the weekend and today, so I've, I've heard lots of what's going on. We're at an impasse here. We're at another 11 o'clock meeting, and I guess we'll have a few more going forward. So this is something we need to address. So I think as a group, if we can do, do that, we need to step up and put together a package that everyone's happy with, if we can do that.
One more go around. Any other discussion on the motion at hand to form a smaller group, work with Tony, get something to hand back to the full board, and I still would propose that we have, go ahead and do a special meeting to try to move this along quickly. Bob?
I would strongly suggest a representative of the I T staff, preferably the I T director, to join this group so that she appreciates what, what's, which she has, or she can weigh in and, and tell us what she's willing to accept.
Yeah, I reflect when they, we added stuff to the fiscal committee's responsibilities that the CFO, PFO is participating in that formation of those, so that's a good suggestion.
Thanks for catching that, Bob. Very important.
All right, so I'm going to call the question that Bob has, I mean, that John has made a motion, and Mike has seconded for, that as the go-to plan for tonight. All right.
May I ask one more question relative to the, relative to the motion, please? This would assume that subsequent to the, this working group getting together, that we would either have a special board meeting or that it would be addressed no later than the February board. Correct?
Right. I fully intend to call a special meeting. And I can, so I don't want to let it languish.
So again, the delay, if we put it off till the February board meeting, is then your call for volunteers goes after that. And then we call, we interview volunteers at the March BAC, and they don't start work till a month. So, you know, be as it may, our opinions are not the popular ones, we're okay to work with the new group, but I think there needs to be a more tight timeline. We're okay to work with the new group, but I think there needs to be a more tight timeline.
What, having a special meeting to vote on a, a resolution? You could also, you could call for volunteers at that same special meeting.
And you still have to have a special meeting of BAC to.
You can call for volunteers right now. We can all, you know, we, we have networks. We can get started on that process at, you know, as this wordsmithing and finishing off is going on, don't you think?
He's me too. Need to extend, it's 11. Um, Tony tells me that as a special meeting, apparently we don't have a time limit. So we can just keep on going until midnight, cause what the hell?
I think you were prior to calling the question anyway, right Julie?
Um, yes, I think Sarah was asking for a clarification as to intent and the schedule. Your concern was a special meeting that you might, it might somehow delay. Also asking for community, uh, input. I think it's important, uh, you know, as Bob said, uh, by bringing Clara into this discussion, we'll be better able to address the particular skills that, you know.
Clara's on this call. We can ask her right now if you want.
Right. And, yeah, but I don't think that that's part of the, um, motion at hand, so, um.
Okay, to, uh, Mike, your suggestion, do we need to have a motion or something in place to direct RA to put out a call for volunteers?
No, but people can start being networked like that. I don't see any, but anyway, that does beside the point. Um, I'm, I'm fine with a few weeks delay. I think this is a great idea. We should have done it years ago. Ben is absolutely right about that, but I'm just seeing this for the first time and I'm not ready to, uh, to vote for it. I'm sure I will be in a couple of weeks.
Let's hope.
Okay, so, um, we're voting. All in favor of John's motion seconded by Mike for a, a small team to work with Tony and to include the director of IT, followed by a special meeting to, um, address this resolution on the Board Information Technology Committee only. Not all the other changes, Karen, to the resolution for that you said you guys were dealing with. Correct. Simply the, um, Information Technology Committee. So all in favor of that motion, aye. Okay, one, I see myself, Aaron, John, Mike, Karen. All right, nays.
Nay from Ben.
Okay, four nays, I see. So the motion carries to.
I, I would like to make a motion to, um, pass the, uh, Technology Review Charter as it is tonight with edits at a later date and the edits be adopted in the special meeting or in the February board meeting.
The resolution.
I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion for the Technology Review Charter as presented tonight to be adopted. And if you have any edits, you can make it at a later date by the February meeting or in the special meeting. I want it be, I want it to be on record who's voting and I, I want it to be because, you know, a month from now or two months from now, if, if we have an incident response that we have to, uh, respond to the community, then I want in the meeting minutes, uh, the directors who were in favor of having a SWAT team and the task force in place, um, i- uh, in order to prevent such an incident. But if we had an incident response.
Vote or something?
Ben made a motion to.
I made a motion. It's that simple as that.
Send it to us tonight as is and has seconded it. Yeah. I don't think we need any more discussion because we just had the antithesis on it a moment before. So all those in favor of.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, that's not what I heard Ben say. Ben said something about a charter.
Right.
I haven't seen a charter.
Yeah, the Technology Review Charter, that's what you have.
I, I have draft resolution four.
And you have the charter as well.
I have.
Draft resolution for also technology.
I don't have.
What would you like me to call it?
Titled Technology Review Charter. So I don't know what you're talking about.
I believe you were referring to the Resolution Four draft in our Dropbox that specifically speaks to Item D, Board Information Technology Committee with responsibilities, composition and performance evaluation.
Boy, you love your words. Yeah, which are words? Use those words in the motion. I would like that to be passed tonight.
I understand.
That's my motion.
Second from Sarah, so, um. Isn't that what we just voted on?
Point, point of order.
We.
Isn't it out of order anyway?
To review that document and come back to the board in a special meeting to vote on the, uh, cleansed draft, um.
It's, it's a simple motion to, it's a simple motion to accept.
Right, and we just wanted that. So I'm going to call the question. I think we all understand what, what you're asking for. So all those in favor of Ben's motion to.
I don't understand it still.
No, I don't.
Wow, you won't even allow a motion to have, so, so do you guys know the, so do you understand the agenda for tonight? Was to review the Resolution Four IT Committee, uh, IT Technology Review Committee, um, uh, document that was presented to you, the draft. Did you read that?
I have it up and I have read it several times. What I am, my point is.
My motion is to accept that as presented.
Yeah, but then we just voted not to do that. That's why we're all confused.
And, and, and so, so let me clear your confusion by saying the reason why I want this on the record is because.
We voted, there, do you want to?
No, we did not vote on this motion.
Yes, we did not.
Point of order.
Motion, so.
Point of order. We have a motion, we seconded and now it's called a question. So you can either vote aye, nay, abstain or leave the meeting.
Okay, you're right.
And if you vote no, you're saying, I'm not willing to pass it tonight. If you vote yes, you're saying, I'm willing to accept it as it is tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, I, uh, counsel, could you advise on this one as, as a point of order is?
It, it's nuanced, but Ben is correct. What you guys asked earlier was, we're going to form a little group, go look at this, we're going to call a special meeting, come back and we're going to vote on it again. He is saying, vote on it right now. So the thing in the first motion that said you couldn't vote on it right now or that this document was not to be addressed tonight. So his, his motion is nuanced, but what it says is in order.
Right.
Thank you.
Ben.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question. Those in favor of Ben's motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
All right, aye from Ben.
Okay, that's four. Nays? Okay, five to four, it fails. Yes. Um. Excuse me while I open the door and let the dog out. And then, um, what I would like to know from, well, tonight is, um, who? Who, I've already given him two bones and it's midnight, um, almost, no, it's 11. Okay, um. Just feels like midnight. Yeah, yeah. Um, so I am willing to work with Tony on it from, um, from the BAC side of it, I, I would guess. I'd like to, from those who voted, would vote, you know, who drafted it. Um, and then I'd like somebody else to join me, whether that's, um, you know, Aaron or, or, um, who else? Karen. I think, John, you've got a heavy load on at the moment.
I think.
Aaron, would you be willing to join me on the reconciliation? Is it, I guess that's the right word? Reconciliation of the, um, of the charter or as, so who, who from, um, from Sarah, Tom, Bob and Ben?
So you have a member in chat asking a question. Are we currently at risk? As President Julie, how would you answer that honestly?
As I expressed earlier tonight, those comments put into the chat room are not necessarily recognized. So, um, it's 11 o'clock and, um.
Interesting, okay.
I will, I will volunteer if, if you, and I won't feel, I won't feel, uh, you can't hurt my feelings if you choose not to, to use me, but I will make myself available to be of assistance to reconcile the versions.
And this being Ben's pet project that he's been working on for four years? I think we need to include Ben in this, at least at this point.
I, I'll be happy to provide any assistance that Bob needs, but I think Bob and, and Sarah, if you want to be, that's fine. And I'll provide any input. Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Bob on it, you know?
Okay, we will make sure then you are kept abreast. Um, I expect that we are not going to take forever. I'm going to ask, uh, Christina, if you would please look at the calendar for when might be the first date we could do a special meeting, uh, preferably before, what's today? Monday, um. Sometime early next week. I'm not sure we will get it done yet this week. If I think about the meetings that are already scheduled to this, yet this week in the evening. So I will try to come up with a, a date, um, tomorrow morning and send it out, see if that's good. And, um, Tony, Aaron, Bob, let's see if we can work through some things via, um, email over the next couple of days and, and also then a Zoom call or so.
Sure.
Okay, um.
Happy to do so.
And, um, to answer the question Sarah and Michelle wanted to pose to us, do I think we are at risk? No, I do not think we are at risk. Okay. Anything else on tonight's agenda? I think that was it, but I. I think that's it. Did I miss anything? I'm circling through my brain. You guys usually catch me if I miss something, so I'm guessing I didn't. Um, then I would like to call for the meeting to be adjourned.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.